And would the clerk call the roll, please?
Commissioner Look.
Here.
Commissioner Brassad.
Here.
Commissioner West.
Here.
Commissioner Schulte.
Here.
Commissioner Meisner.
Here.
Commissioner Gamash.
Here.
Commissioner Reiner.
I am here.
Excellent. All present and accounted for. We'll move on to item four, which is tax claims and abatements. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
A motion by Commissioner Brassad. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Meisner. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, this is a roll call vote.
Commissioner Brassad.
Aye.
Commissioner West.
Aye.
Commissioner Schulte.
Aye.
Commissioner Meisner.
Aye.
Commissioner Mash.
Aye.
Commissioner Reiner.
Here.
Commissioner Look.
And that item passes. Item five will be consider accepting the regular claims paid over $500 and purchase card claims paid for the period ending May 7th of 2021. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
A motion by Commissioner Look.
Second.
Is there a second? Second by Commissioner West. Is there further discussion? Seeing no discussion, we'll move to a roll call vote.
Commissioner West.
Aye.
Commissioner Schulte.
Aye.
Commissioner Meisner.
Aye.
Commissioner Gamash.
Aye.
Commissioner Reiner.
Aye.
Commissioner Look.
Aye.
Commissioner Brassad.
Aye.
And that item passes. Next, we'll entertain approval of the minutes from the May 11th, 2021 county board meeting. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
A motion by Commissioner Brassad. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Gamash. Are there any corrections or changes to the minutes? Seeing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed, say nay, and that item passes. Next, we are going to switch items nine and eight on your agenda, and we are going to move to your attention, consider for review and comment purposes, the city of Columbia Heights, proposed establishment of the Alatus Tiff District, a redevelopment tax increment financing district located in downtown Central Business Redevelopment Project. We have with us via WebEx, Aaron Chirpik, who will go over this for us. Aaron, welcome. We can't hear you. I don't know if you are muted or if it's on our end, but if we'll...
How's that?
That's much better.
Thank you. Of course, the obligatory glitch to start it off. Thank you for the introduction, Mr. Chair and Commissioners. We're excited for the opportunity to present what is a very exciting project for the city of Columbia Heights to you for any questions and comments. We're early on in the project, but we just started the application process to establish this Tiff District. And I'll go ahead and share my screen and go through a quick presentation here. So if you bear with me. There we go. All right. Everybody seeing that okay?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you. Okay. So the redevelopment site that we're talking about is at the intersection of Central and 44th Avenue on our primary commercial corridor, as many of you are probably aware. The site contains a partially vacant multi-tenant strip center. It was actually the proposed Hy-Vee development site for a site that Hy-Vee acquired in 2016 and received land use approvals to rehabilitate a portion of this strip center. So they were just going to fix up what essentially was the old Rainbow Foods portion of the site. Since that time, our development partner has brokered a deal to acquire the site and has invited Hy-Vee in the project. And we're hopeful that they will consider a smaller format store in this redevelopment concept, but that is yet to be seen. They're still working on whether or not they're going to partner with us. It's a 13-acre site, so this is a pretty tremendous opportunity to be located on Central Avenue. And the city considers a redevelopment rather than rehabilitation to be the higher and best use of the property in comparison to what was previously proposed. It does include a three-acre city-owned site that contains a stormwater pond right now that is proposed to be undergrounded and relocated as part of this project so that we can maximize the property. It is located in Columbia Heights Singular Opportunities Zone. But just to give you an aerial perspective, here we are in the intersection of 44th and Central. You can see the city's stormwater pond on the west end of the site and that existing multi-tenant strip center. There's a couple of tenants in there currently, Ace Hardware and Dollar Store. And they will be vacating the property as part of this concept. Ace, however, was invited to stay, and they have initially said that they won't pursue a new spot in the project. But our developer partner, Alatus, hasn't ruled it out, but they've got some semi-long-term leases that we have to work around as part of this. And we expect to phase the project into a couple of phases to accommodate their remaining lease terms. This is the strip center, just for your reference, of what we proposed to remove. You can see Ace Hardware and Dollar Tree on the right. The rest of the building, the Rainbow and the Slumberland portion are currently vacant and have been vacant since 2016. So our partner again is Alatus LLC. They were, are our partner on the 40th and Central redevelopment that we reviewed with your board a couple of years ago. So we're looking to partner with that same team. Four to 600 market-rate apartment units are being proposed, underground parking, street-level commercial retail with a 40,000-square-foot grocer as an anchor. So bringing the retail and commercial up to Central Avenue, which is more consistent with urban design principles that we want to cultivate on that corridor rather than the sea of parking that's currently there. Actually, a city park being proposed on about a third of the property and a single-family residential subdivision on the western end of the project site. It also is an opportunity from a Tiff perspective for the city to contemplate some very important regional utility upgrades. So right now, we've got a sanitary sewer issue in the vicinity of this project. It's the low point of the city. And we've got a bit of a bottleneck that's been plaguing the city for a couple of decades, actually. And a project of this scale and magnitude will afford us to to build in some of these long-needed infrastructure improvements that are going to help not just this project site, but a lot of properties and single-family homes in the vicinity of the project area. So just a plain view of what's being contemplated, Central Avenue to the right of your screen, bordered by 44th. So commercial apartments along Central in a vertical mixed-use orientation, the city park space in the middle of the site, and then a single-family residential subdivision to the west, kind of taking a more natural step down into the surrounding residential neighborhoods and a complete redesign of the site. Just some more perspectives. These are just early renderings, but it gives you a sense of the massing of this project and the transformation that's being contemplated. And this is, again, looking from the west, from the single-family perspective, looking toward Central Avenue. So we're a little early in the Tiff process, and the total amount of assistance has not been determined. It's likely going to be upwards of $10 million plus of eligible Tiff expenditures. The duration of the district not determined yet. We're still working through that, but it's fair to say that it's likely up to 25 years. We want to have the Tiff District put in place by the end of June of this year. And that's with an anticipating Phase One groundbreaking of spring 2022. Phase One would take place in the corner of the site that's farthest away from the visiting tenants. And actually, we're contemplating demoing two-thirds of the building to accommodate that and keep their business operations open while Phase One kicks off. Total estimated project value for this is in and around $150 million. And just an update I wanted to share with you guys. This is the last project that we brought before your board, the 40th and Central Avenue. 260 market-rate apartments with a new city hall underneath and a cafe. This is under construction right now, and we're very excited to see that project come out of the ground. And of course, the support from your board for that project is greatly appreciated. And we're happy to talk about this upcoming project and answer any questions that you might have. That's it for my presentation.
Well, thank you, Aaron. Are there any questions or comments for Columbia Heights and Aaron? Commissioner Meisner.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. No questions at this time, but just commentary that I'm really glad that this is moving forward as all of us in that community just looked at that empty spot for a long time. So good luck with that. And then when is your board, the city council, going to be finalizing this?
Okay, Commissioner Meisner, that's a good question. I want to pull up a calendar if I could. I think we're looking at the end of June for the final hearing. The first hearing is actually June 14th for the establishment of the Tiff District and concluding on June 28th. So that's, those two meetings will, there'll be a review by the city council on this project.
Commissioner Meisner.
Thank you. Just a quick follow-up question with that then. So for the initial one on June 14th, you don't have to state your duration of the Tiff District then, correct? It's not until June 28th when you would do that?
It's likely that we will state it on the 14th.
Oh, it is. Okay.
Yeah, I think we most definitely will have that calculated. But I don't know if we're obligated at that date. I just anticipate that we will be sharing it as soon as possible.
Thank you.
Hi, Aaron. This is Commissioner Schulte. A quick question. Did I see that correctly, that that's in that single-home development, that that's actually an alleyway between the homes with garages on the alleyway? And is that alleyway privately owned or publicly owned?
Really good questions. Right now, there is an alley, and again, this is conceptual, so please bear that in mind. Our Public Works Department is supportive of that alley arrangement. It's a continuation of the existing grid that's already there, and it would be a publicly-owned or city-owned alley is what is contemplated now. It has been a point of conversation internally with staff whether or not we want to create that arrangement, and is that the right type of layout for the market right now? And I think it remains to be seen, and that might evolve into a layout that doesn't have an alley. So I just want to be cautious that there's a lot of things that could change with this concept. These are just the three component parts that we're circulating on, and we haven't engaged the residents yet. That'll be the next phase of of this initiative and see what they're looking for as it relates to configuration, layout of the homes, the park area in particular. So I think the western two-thirds of the project have the largest potential for change as we move forward because the stuff on Central, you know, commercial retail and apartments, that's kind of the fixed component at this time that we know is essential to making this all work.
Well, thank you, Aaron. Commissioner Reiner has a question.
It's a quick question. You said that there were 400 to 600 units, and I see that there's senior housing and apartments as, you know, two elements of the project. And is the 400 to 600 include all of those or just apartments?
That's a really good question. 400 to 600 is the full spectrum of market rate. So the senior housing and then the traditional market rate, non-age-restricted. They're still working through what will the ultimate balance be. They've engaged a variety of senior developers in our market to try and craft that right balance. They anticipate that the first phase would, Phase One, would be just market-rate apartments and likely the grocery store component to kick it off. And then perhaps the Phase One would stimulate more interest in the senior component of the project. So it, to be determined on the unit mix and balance, but total overall apartments, 400 to 600, and the single-family subdivision, I think we're in and around 30 units, 30 single-family homes.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments for Aaron and the city of Columbia Heights and their Tiff District? Seeing none, we'll consider this item on the agenda taken care of. Thank you, Aaron, for your presentation, and good luck on the rest of your process with your Tiff District.
Thank you for the time, Commissioners. Have a good day.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And I would like to call out our communications team again for setting up a wonderful opportunity to to be flexible in the way we deal with government and how we take care of multi-jurisdictional projects. So thank you, Eric, and your team, and of course, our IT department makes all that happen too. So, thank you, Susan. Let's move on then to item eight on our agenda, which is the committee reports, and we'll start out with the Transportation Committee. We had the opportunity to meet on May 17th at the Maple Room at Bunker Hills Activity Center. As a point to note, our future meetings will now all be held at the Anoka County Highway Building on Bunker Lake Boulevard moving forward. So this was our last one in this remote location. We have a number of items for you to look at today. First action item is the committee recommends approval of a resolution authorizing the acquisition of right-of-way for the reconditioning of Bunker Lake Boulevard from Armstrong Boulevard to Sunfish Lake Boulevard in the city of Ramsey. Is there an offer of the resolution?
I will offer it.
The resolution's been offered by Commissioner Look. Is there further discussion or request for more information from our highway engineer? Seeing none. This is, oh, sorry, Commissioner Look.
So Chair, I just, I remember in committee, we brought up the notion that there's kind of been a master agreement with the city of Ramsey as it relates to this corridor and future build-outs and things of that nature, and who's going to cover this ultimate cost? Do we pay for it now, get reimbursed later? Has any of that been, Joe, has any of that been nailed down as before this? Or do we make, need to make it contingent on it?
Joe?
Yeah. Good morning, Mr. Chair, fellow Commissioners. My name is Joel McPherson. I'm the Transportation Division Manager and County Engineer. Commissioner Look, to your question, we haven't reached that point in the project development where we're negotiating the JPA with them. That is a discussion item that we're going to bring forward. As you mentioned, there is a standing joint powers agreement with the city of Ramsey on their cost participation on improvements along Bunker Lake Boulevard. So this will be a discussion item with them in the near future.
Thank you, Joe.
So, Mr. Chair, I'm assuming that we're going to go ahead and authorize this if it's voted that way today, and we would purchase this with the hopes that we get reimbursed then?
Joe?
Yeah, Mr. Chair. Commissioner Look, so many times when we do projects of this type, the county will purchase the right-of-way, and then at a future date will be reimbursed based on the cost percentages and so forth. So that discussion will be coming forward here as we move forward with the project.
Okay, the resolution is before us. Is there further comments? Seeing none. This is a roll call vote.
Commissioner Schulte.
Aye.
Commissioner Meisner.
Aye.
Commissioner Gamash.
Aye.
Commissioner Reiner.
Aye.
Commissioner Look.
Aye.
Commissioner Brassad.
Aye.
Commissioner West.
Aye.
That item passes. Second on your agenda, the committee recommends approval of a resolution transferring ditch proceedings to the Rice Creek Watershed District for approval of alterations to County Ditch 53-62 associated with the reconstruction of 125th Avenue from Harper Street to Lexington Avenue in the city of Blaine. Is there an offer of the resolution?
I'll offer the resolution.
Resolution's been offered by Commissioner Brassad. Is there further discussion or explanation requested? Seeing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? That will pass unanimously. Item three on your agenda, the committee recommends approval to enter into a joint powers agreement with the city of Spring Lake Park for a sub-project of the 2021 county-wide overlay program on Central Avenue between 81st Avenue and County State Aid Highway 10 in the city of Spring Lake Park. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
A motion by Commissioner Meisner and a second by Commissioner West. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none. This is a roll call vote.
Commissioner Meisner.
Aye.
Commissioner Gamash.
Aye.
Commissioner Reiner.
Aye.
Commissioner Look.
Aye.
Commissioner Brassad.
Aye.
Commissioner West.
Aye.
Commissioner Schulte.
Aye.
That item passes. Next, we'll move on to item four. The committee recommends approval to enter into a joint powers agreement with the city of Coon Rapids for improvements to Trunk Highway 610 and the East River Road interchange in the city of Coon Rapids. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
There's a motion by Commissioner Gamash. Is there a second? I'll second that. Is there further discussion? We've discussed this one many times. This is the interchange at 610 and East River Road, and this is just to enter that joint powers agreement. Any further discussion? Seeing none, this is a roll call vote.
Commissioner Gamash.
Aye.
Commissioner Reiner.
Aye.
Commissioner Look.
Aye.
Commissioner Brassad.
Aye.
Commissioner West.
Aye.
Commissioner Schulte.
Aye.
Commissioner Meisner.
Aye.
That item passes. Next, item five, the committee recommends approval to enter into joint powers agreement with the city of, or with Ramsey County for a sub-project of the 2021 county-wide overlay program on 85th Avenue or County Road J between Trunk Highway 65 and US Highway 10 in the city of Blaine and Moundsview. Is there a motion to approve?
I'll move it.
A motion by Commissioner West. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Second by Commissioner Reiner. Further discussion? This is a multi-county project where we each own half of a road. So we're just entering into a process where the road gets done by one contractor, and we split the cost, essentially. Any further comments? Seeing none, this is a roll call vote.
Commissioner Reiner.
Aye.
Commissioner Look.
Aye.
Commissioner Brassad.
Aye.
Commissioner West.
Aye.
Commissioner Schulte.
Aye.
Commissioner Meisner.
Aye.
Commissioner Gamash.
Aye.
And that item passes. That does conclude my transportation committee report. Now we will go to the management committee report, and we'll go to Commissioner West.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The items on the irregular agenda are informational, but we have two additional items. First is to consider recommending the county board approve addendum three to contract C0007740D with Helios HR in the amount of $475,650. It's for expanded classification and compensation work, and that would be effective today. I'll just name some of the titles that will be added. Looking at job descriptions, Fair Labor Standards Act analysis, compensation benchmarking, market index analysis, salary structure, design options, salary administration guidelines, employee analysis, and a communication plan.
Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
A motion by Commissioner Meisner. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner West. Is there further discussion? Commissioner Meisner.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Yeah, just commentary. First of all, I really appreciated the fact that all seven of us could sit down and learn a little bit more. I am not a human resource specialist, so to be educated about classification and compensation, how that works together. And this is the first step then in order to have good compensation, which obviously attracts and retains the talent that we have and wish to have. So I do appreciate, again, that full board discussion with finance.
For the public certification, Commissioner Meisner's referring to a public workshop that we held a week or so ago where we had an opportunity to discuss our our classification system within Anoka County. With that, is there any further discussion? Commissioner Look.
Mr. Chair, thank you. I am, I'm glad that we're able to somewhat look into a market analysis here to determine some of these questions that we might have prior to making any decisions. I guess I'm, I'm still a little reluctant from the standpoint that my understanding was a market analysis was in the $3 million range, something of that nature, and that this is a bargain at $475,000. So while that's still a lot of money, I'm, I'm still at a loss a little bit as to why some people are paying an exceptional amount of money for what we're paying very little for. So that being said, I know that some of these, some of these things can be less based on work product. And I, I want to, I want to make sure that we're going into this with, without assumptions. I want to make sure that we're going into this without influencing outcomes. I want to make sure that we're not somewhat leading the witness, if you will, in the process. I think this needs to be fair because there's been a lot of critique that, oh, you're not paying enough, or whatever the case is. And we've done an analysis before where we aren't the highest paid, we aren't the lowest paid, but we're kind of right in the middle. And one of the things we did identify in the process is that wage is only one component. You know, where you work and quality of life is important as well. Benefits is huge. And that we're, I've heard the term "rich" in terms of benefits at this county. And so when we're doing an analysis of employee compensation, if we just go out and say, well, X job gets $50,000 a year, and, oh, they're paying $70,000 a year somewhere else, that's not necessarily the, a clear analysis of what that is because benefits can play into that certainly. And, and you aren't looking at the whole cost of the employee. So in the process here, I want to, I want to make sure that we're identifying the whole cost and comparing it to what our whole cost is, so it's a fair comparison. In the process, I would like to know what the work product is. I'd like to know what the defined assumptions are. I would like positions not to be compared to vendors that are under contract with the county. For example, we contract with a lot of engineering firms, and engineering firms have been paying higher than what we pay engineers sometimes. And then we contract with them, and they throw a bid out there that's absolutely enormous. Well, that's consistent with higher payment, obviously, because if you're going to pay your employees, your engineers in this case, more, you're going to charge more when you bid out a contract. So I know Human Services, we outsource some of our work as well. And, and it's always amazed me that they may try and pay more on that end and then charge more for the services that they offer. So I would like those type of anomalies removed from this analysis and to make it a little clearer. And then finally, I think it's important that we compare to like counties because I can guarantee you if we compare it to Hennepin County, we're less. I can guarantee you that out of all the counties in the state, if they compare it to Hennepin County, they're less. And so removing the anomaly there would also be helpful in this process. So again, once this comes back in terms of the study that's done, and I'm not sure how long that's going to take, I would, I'm, I would like a detailed report on this. I plan on going through it with a fine-tooth comb and in reading and absorbing all the information that we just paid $475,000 for.
Well, thank you, Commissioner Look. I appreciate your engagement in this process and so we can make sure we wind up with a great project or a great program in the end. I'm confident we will. Any further comments? Commissioner Gamash, then Commissioner Meisner.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I did have that question as to how long will this take? Do we know from when we vote on this today what the process will be?
We will have Steph Bido Zimmer from our Employee Relations Division come up and explain to us. Steph?
Mr. Chair, Commissioners, good morning. I'm Steph Bido Zimmer. I'm the Director of Employee Relations. On average, this is usually a nine-month process. It is being condensed into a six-to-seven month process to align with HRMS. It is being condensed into a six-to-seven month process to align with HRMS system. And some of the milestones, excuse me, some of the milestones needed to be reached to ensure we have data for that system, we'll shortcut it a bit. So following what we hope will be approval today, our next immediate step is to sit with Helios and map out the milestones and the timing of when we will have some of these deliverables. And just to comment, Commissioner Look, on some of the components that you touched on, Helios HR is a gold standard in this area, and they have a lot of expertise. It will be done independent of influence and the anomalies that you have called out, best practices to make sure that those things are removed so that you don't have outliers influencing data. So we feel very confident in this vendor that we have worked with for two years as being the right solution. I certainly can't speak to why prior estimates were in the millions. I would say that would be atypical from what I know many other counties historically have paid, but I can't speak to that. I do know and believe that this to be a fair competitive estimate for us that will be all encompassing as to what you're looking for, for your decision-making needs, so.
Miss? Follow-up?
Quick follow while Steph is up there. One of the things that we've been discussing is how to be competitive, and there's many ways to be competitive, and not just financially, obviously, but benefits and things like that. Also, with what we learned over the last year with having people working from home, not being in the office, you know, 40 hours a week, I'm assuming that Helios will take all of that into consideration as to how you can structure positions within the county, and I'm just kind of curious how that's moving along, if that's part of what you're talking about.
Commissioner Gamash? So they will be looking at what is total compensation, and that includes much more than just the salary. So it will include all those other components, which now certainly encompasses some remote and/or hybrid capabilities and how we compare to others. So all of that will be taken as sort of a total compensation package comparison, not just salary.
Thank you.
Commissioner Meisner?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Yeah, just, you know, Commissioner Look was focusing on the compensation, which, you know, I probably will disagree a little bit on some of his points. But mostly, I just wanted to clarify that this is about the new classification system, which was established here in 1986. It's 35 years old. So all of these things can be standardized and truly looked at because we can't even look at compensation without correct classification. At least, that was my understanding in the workshop.
Any further comments? Seeing none, this is a roll call vote.
Commissioner Look?
Aye.
Commissioner Brassad?
Aye.
Commissioner West?
Aye.
Commissioner Schulte?
Aye.
Commissioner Meisner?
Aye.
Commissioner Gamash?
Aye.
Commissioner Reiner?
Aye.
That item passes.
And, Mr. Chairman, consider recommending the county board adopt Resolution 2021-M6. It's a resolution revoking the temporary changes under the personnel rules related to employee paid time off in response to the COVID-19 crisis.
Is there an offer of the resolution?
I'll offer the resolution.
The resolution has been offered by Commissioner West. Is there further discussion? I would just make the same comment I made at the Management Committee, that our administration here in Anoka County was very responsive and reactive to necessary changes needed because of COVID-19 to protect the health and safety of our employees. They did that, and then with enacting a number of these initiatives within HR allowed them to receive necessary medical pay when necessary. All those different things that we had to enact for COVID-19 were now able to rescind because we're well on the way back to a healthy society and getting back to a full-functioning society. So a shout-out to our administrative staff for their work there. So with that, we have a resolution before us.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Gamash?
Thank you. Just a quick question, I just want to narrow this down. So basically, we've taken out all of the extra stuff that we had put in at the beginning of this and gone back to our normal benefits. Okay, thank you.
That's accurate. Seeing no further discussion, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? The resolution has been adopted.
Mr. Chairman, that concludes my report.
Thank you, Commissioner West. Let's move on to the Finance and Capital Improvements Committee report, and we'll look to Commissioner Look.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The Finance and Capital Improvements Committee, as indicated earlier, met on May 18. We had all the commissioners there for discussion on various items. But as it relates to the work of the committee, we came away with two action items, which was that the committee recommends the county board approve contract C-006464B with Compass Group to be a canteen vending for a 24-month renewal from July 1, 2021, to June 20, 2023, with a compensation of 20% of sales for vending and market sales, which goes to the Anoka County Employees Club. As folks know, we've had this vending service. I think it's been going quite well for people, so we want to continue with the work with the relationship we have with them and continue to offer that option for our employees.
Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
I have a motion by Commissioner Brassad. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner West. Further discussion? Seeing no further discussion, this is a roll call vote.
Commissioner Brassad?
Aye.
Commissioner West?
Aye.
Commissioner Schulte?
Aye.
Commissioner Meisner?
Aye.
Commissioner Gamash?
Aye.
Commissioner Reiner?
Aye.
Commissioner Look?
Aye.
That item passes.
Mr. Chair, the second item is the committee recommends the county board adopt Resolution 2021-F2, Performance Measurement Program for 2024, 2020, rather, performance measures. This is something we do every year. It's information we collect and that the state uses and pays us $25,000 for. So we've done this in the past, and this is another opportunity.
Is there an offer of the resolution?
So moved.
I have an offer of the resolution by Commissioner Meisner. It is before you. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, this is a roll call vote.
Commissioner West?
Aye.
Commissioner Schulte?
Aye.
Commissioner Meisner?
Aye.
Commissioner Gamash?
Aye.
Commissioner Reiner?
Aye.
Commissioner Look?
Aye.
Commissioner Brassad?
Aye.
That item passes.
Mr. Chair, the rest is for informational purposes and concludes my report.
Thank you, Commissioner Look. Let's go to the Human Services Committee report, and we'll now listen to Commissioner Reiner.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, so the committee met on 5/18. We've got a few items before you for consideration. First is the consent agenda. Got a few items there, and I'd like to move adoption of those.
There's a motion before us for the consent agenda. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Brassad. Is there any discussion on the consent agenda? Commissioner Meisner?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just wanted to share what I shared in the actual committee meeting, which is that there was a retirement of Brad Thiel. So I wish him luck and thank him for his 24 years of service. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Meisner. Any further comments? Seeing none, this is a roll call vote.
Commissioner Schulte?
Aye.
Commissioner Meisner?
Aye.
Commissioner Gamash?
Aye.
Commissioner Reiner?
Aye.
Commissioner Look?
Aye.
Commissioner Brassad?
Aye.
Commissioner West?
Aye.
And that item passes.
So next, we'll move to job training, and we've got, I believe, just one item there. And this is to consider recommending the board submit Workforce Innovations and Opportunity Act, WEO, annual plan for Anoka County workforce development to the Department of Employment and Economic Development for integrated workforce development for July 1, 2021, through June 30, 2024. Typically, a two-year contract, but because of COVID, it's been bumped to three years.
Very good, thank you. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Motion by Commissioner Meisner. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner West. Is there further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? That will pass unanimously.
And next, we'll move to Community Corrections. We've got one item there to consider recommending the county board to enter into contract C-008546 with the Minnesota Department of Corrections for reentry and halfway housing funding to temporarily house up to six homeless offenders released from prison at the Anoka County Workhouse in an amount of up to $45,000. And this is a grant that was applied for, and basically, this is accepting and receiving those dollars.
Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
A motion by Commissioner Meisner. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Gamash. Is there further discussion? Commissioner Meisner?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just commentary that I am pleased at how quickly that this was approved and accepted, and I wish Dylann good luck. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Seeing none, this is a roll call vote.
Commissioner Meisner?
Aye.
Commissioner Gamash?
Aye.
Commissioner Reiner?
Aye.
Commissioner Look?
Aye.
Commissioner Brassad?
Aye.
Commissioner West?
Aye.
Commissioner Schulte?
Aye.
That item passes.
And just a couple more items that the committee recommended adoption by the county board. We've got Resolution 2021-HS8, and this is for medical assistance and general assistance bills in the amount of $372,776.42.
Is there an offer of the resolution?
I'll offer the resolution.
Resolution's been offered by Commissioner Brassad. Is there further discussion? Seeing none, this is a roll call vote.
Commissioner Gamash?
Aye.
Commissioner Reiner?
Aye.
Commissioner Look?
Aye.
Commissioner Brassad?
Aye.
Commissioner West?
Aye.
Commissioner Schulte?
Aye.
Commissioner Meisner?
Aye.
This next one I kind of like. It's Resolution 2021-HS9. This is accepting gifts for Human Services, and it's a nonprofit called Minnesota Quilters. These are handmade quilts that are being given for donation. I think it's up to 13 of these quilts, and it's to be given to mothers in need who can't afford something like this.
Is there an offer of the resolution?
I'll offer the resolution.
Resolution's been offered by Commissioner West. Is there further discussion? Seeing none, this is a roll call vote.
Commissioner Reiner?
Aye.
Commissioner Look?
Aye.
Commissioner Brassad?
Aye.
Commissioner West?
Aye.
Commissioner Schulte?
Aye.
Commissioner Meisner?
Aye.
Commissioner Gamash?
Aye.
And last but not least, the Resolution 2021-HS10, declarations and easement and stormwater maintenance agreement for the Rice Creek Compost Site Expansion Project and authorization to execute and record those documents. And this project is, I believe, still on schedule to be done May of 2022.
Is there an offer of the resolution?
I'd like to offer that resolution.
Resolution has been offered by Commissioner Reiner and is before you now. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, this is a roll call vote.
Commissioner Look?
Aye.
Commissioner Brassad?
Aye.
Commissioner West?
Aye.
Commissioner Schulte?
Aye.
Commissioner Meisner?
Aye.
Commissioner Gamash?
Aye.
Commissioner Reiner?
Aye. And the rest of our business was routine and informational, and that completes my report, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner Reiner. We will now move to the Public Safety Committee Chair Report, and Commissioner Brassad.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. We just have three routine actions where we're going to be voting on accepting grant monies. The first is under the Sheriff's Office, and I would recommend adoption of Resolution 2021-PS05. It's a county board authorization of signatory for the 2021 State of Minnesota Federal Boating Safety Patrol Supplemental Grant Agreement. It's a maximum reimbursement of $12,625 in a term of May 14, 2021, through September 6, 2021.
Is there an offer of the resolution?
I'll offer it.
Resolution's been offered by Commissioner Look and is before you. Are there any further comments? Seeing none, this is a roll call vote.
Commissioner Brassad?
Aye.
Commissioner West?
Aye.
Commissioner Schulte?
Aye.
Commissioner Meisner?
Aye.
Commissioner Gamash?
Aye.
Commissioner Reiner?
Aye.
Commissioner Look?
Aye.
That item passes.
I would recommend approval and execution of contract C-008560, the 2020 Emergency Management Performance Grant COVID-19 Supplemental Grant between the State of Minnesota, the Department of Public Safety, and Anoka County Emergency Management in the amount of $70,620 in a term of January 27, 2020, through December 1, 2021. And I'll move that.
There's a motion before us. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner West. Further discussion? Seeing none, this is a roll call vote.
Commissioner West?
Aye.
Commissioner Schulte?
Aye.
Commissioner Meisner?
Aye.
Commissioner Gamash?
Aye.
Commissioner Reiner?
Aye.
Commissioner Look?
Aye.
Commissioner Brassad?
Aye.
That item passes.
And the last item is that I would recommend approval and execution of contract C-008561 for the year 2022-2023, radiological emergency preparedness grants in an amount not to exceed $6,000 for a term of July 1, 2021, through June 30, 2023. And I'll move that.
There's a motion before us. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner West. Is there further discussion? Seeing none, this is a roll call vote.
Commissioner Schulte?
Aye.
Commissioner Meisner?
Aye.
Commissioner Gamash?
Aye.
Commissioner Reiner?
Aye.
Commissioner Look?
Aye.
Commissioner Brassad?
Aye.
Commissioner West?
Aye.
And that item passes.
And that concludes my report.
Aye.
And that item passes.
And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Commissioner Brassad. That brings us back to our original agenda where we've already completed item nine, so we'll move to item 10, which is a public hearing to obtain comments concerning Anoka County user fees. And I will turn this over to our county attorney.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. At this time, I will then convene the hearing, the public hearing, the purpose of which is, of course, to receive public comment concerning the amendment to the Anoka County user fees. This notice of public hearing was published in the official newspaper of Anoka County on May 14th, 2021. I would ask the clerk to take note of that and make it a part of the record. And at this point, I would then call on Division Manager Corey Kampf to address the board as to those user fees. Mr. Kampf.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Plumb, Mr. Chair, County Board. My name is Corey Kampf, I'm the Finance and Central Services Division Manager. Twice a year, we come before you with a public hearing to, and ask departments to bring in any adjustments in fees. And again, under the State of Minnesota, the goal with our fees is to be, is to have them pay for the cost of the service. We are not in a profit-making business. So we have a small list for you today. The majority of the fees are environmental services in that program area. If you do have questions, I know we have a representative from Environmental Services, I believe Allison is here, and she can address those questions if you have them. Besides environmental services, countywide, we do have a notary public fee. This is a request to increase that from one to five to meet the standard that is out there in today. So any questions?
Any questions?
Any questions for Division Manager Kampf? Now, Mr. Kampf, the notice didn't ask that any members of the public should submit comments to you. Did you receive any comments from the public on these?
We have not received any comments from the public.
Okay.
Mr. Chair.
Board.
Thank you. Just a quick question, and I should have asked this at our previous meeting, and I'm not sure why I didn't. And maybe everybody else knows, but I'm assuming the jump from the annual food and lodging fees for bed and breakfasts that we're seeing here is due to some, something we had not ever, we've never done before, or it was a change maybe in state law or exactly? Thank you.
Mr. Chair, members of the board, Commissioner Gamache, are you referring to the bed and breakfast?
Yes.
Yes. So we have not had a license fee for bed and breakfast in the county as of yet, and we are trying to be beneficial for that type of business model and add a new annual license fee that would directly relate to bed and breakfast versus a motel or a hotel or that type of establishment.
Okay, so just a quick follow-up.
Go ahead.
Thank you. I'm not sure who I'm doing here.
I'm running a meeting.
Got it.
She wanted back.
Okay, so in the past, at a bed and breakfast, they would have to get a fee or they would have to do, have review fees for, excuse me, annual food and lodging fees, those types of things, would have to go through what we have set up as hotels, motels, is that right?
They would actually have to have two classifications. They'd have to have a food license for their kitchen, the food that they were serving, and then they would have to have a lodging license for the lodging establishment portion. So this would be creating a new lodging fee, which would specifically address bed and breakfast, and it would encompass both their food and their lodging.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Did you have, Commissioner, go ahead, Commissioner Meisner.
Thank you, Mr. Attorney. Yeah, and just to follow up with that same thing, so I believe that this is the only bed and breakfast that we have in Anoka County, so this is why we created this. And I think in the past, their total fees with the lodging and the food was like $887.
Okay. Commissioner Reiner, do you have a comment?
Yeah, actually, it was the same comment. This, these fees actually represent a reduction in fees that the one and only bed and breakfast in Anoka County was paying, so.
Okay. Any other questions, comments by members of the board? Could I ask, since this is a public hearing, to identify yourself and your position with the county, please?
Yes, sir. My name is Allison Peterson. I'm the manager for the Environmental Services Department.
All right, thank you, Allison. Any other questions? Okay, since this is the first time in a long time we've invited the public to participate, I will then turn and ask if there are any members of the public who are present and wish to make any comments to the board. I will ask a second time, any members of the public wish to come forward? And I'm seeing none, but I will ask a third time, any members of the public wish to come forward at this time? Mr. Chair and members of the board, I see no members have come forward at this point, so I will then close the meeting and turn it back to you.
Thank you, Attorney Plumb. We will now consider Resolution 2021-64 relating to fees for various services, including fees related to permits and licenses and sales of materials to the public and other government agencies. Is there an offer of the resolution?
I'll offer it.
I have an offer by Commissioner Gamache. Is there further discussion? Seeing none, this is a roll call vote.
Commissioner Meisner.
Aye.
Commissioner Gamache.
Aye.
Commissioner Reiner.
Aye.
Commissioner Look.
Aye.
Commissioner Brassad.
Aye.
Commissioner West.
Aye.
Commissioner Schulte.
Aye.
That item passes. Next, we'll move on to item 11, where we'll consider approving a contract renewal of the Anoka County Property Insurance from Chubb Group through Arthur J. Gallagher for a policy term of June 1st, 2021, till June 1st of 2022 for a premium of $478,354. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Motion by Commissioner Brassad. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Meisner. Is there further discussion?